Okay, we're calling to order the regular meeting of the Denali Borough Planning Commission at 6:00. Can we have a roll call, please?
Lee Lightfoot? Susan Braun?
Here.
Eric Haugen? Steve Jones? Mark Meeke?
Here.
Baxter Mercer?
Here.
James Ward?
Here.
Kesslin Tinch?
Here.
There is a quorum. Eric Haugen did call to say that he would be here, but he doesn't get up work till 6:30.
I'd like to use Lee Lightfoot. Okay, do we have any public comments? No? Okay. Um. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Is it your second?
I second it.
Any discussion, any amendments or changes to the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, raise your hand. Okay. Agenda is approved. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 21 regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the April meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there, are there any changes or amendments to the meeting minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand. Okay, minutes are approved. Is there any correspondence?
No, there are none.
We have no Platts and conditional uses. So, reports. Mayor, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Planning Commission, great to be with you, both in person and virtual this evening. It is our first in-person meeting in about 20 years. And, no, actually, you know, 16 months. And, and I want to thank our clerk, Amber Renshaw, for the incredible job of putting this hybrid together. I don't know many other municipalities who have figured this out, but Amber did. And.
Yeah, Amber.
Really, and, you know, we said we were going to kind of be the guinea pigs this evening as we are the first meeting of this, of this variety. But so far, so good. I'm glad everybody can, can see, be seen and, and also be broadcast to the public for transparency. So, you do have a written report in your packet. It is the same report I sent to the Assembly last week. There are some topics of mutual interest and also, you know, topics that, just as a rural citizen, you might be interested in that don't directly relate to the Planning Commission or land. But I would like to highlight and provide some more updates on a couple of those that relate to projects that the Planning Commission has, has considered, reviewed over the years. Number one is that mile 231 Safety Enhancement Project. The Planning Commission did, did make comment on, on previous drafts, iterations, and contributed to its design over the years. And, and in the report, I, I report that the design has changed once again and, and been downscaled as that the, the full project with the big bridge replacement and added lanes on the bridge just simply wasn't going to get funded. We, we looked high and low, searched every potential way to get that funded, even applying for a build grant two years ago, and it just, just wasn't going to get funded. So, so this kind of down scaled project keeps the structurally sound bridge in place and does add a number of important safety features, turn lanes, and actually bridges. It creates, it does create a new bridge, just not the, the Nana River Bridge. It actually bridges the connection between the east and west properties on both sides of the highway there, between those commercial properties, rather than run up to the highway and across the highway. Those pedestrians would walk under the highway, which would be over that underpass. So, it gets bridged there. And turn lanes at the, at the, what is the Old Parks Highway? Or the McKinley Community Center and Community Turn In there gets a turn lane. And the turn lane, I understand, would be extended to a new driveway. Just the new driveway that, that could enter the, not in a property, that a turn lane would extend all the way to that location, is the way I understand the design right now. And, and currently, the Senate is, is considering the operating and capital budget and monies for this project are actually in the budget that's being deliberated this evening in the state legislature. That really is 11.8 million. So, that's exciting and moving. Oh, and we are engaged with this especially because to get that, to get an acceleration lane southbound up the big hill to cut into that bank, and, and the DOT doesn't have enough right of way there to create that lane that they, that they want for this project. And so they have asked the borough to consider conveying about one acre of land there. And we did work with them and, and recommend to move forward with the process wherein we'd be compensated for that, that acreage in fair market value so that appraisal is kind of the next step in that process. We hope that that, a little bit more lengthy process doesn't put up, doesn't interfere with the project. We want to, we want to be a good partner in it, but at the same time, we also want fair compensation. So, some other topics here about public health legislative updates. The work with the SCORF, the Statewide Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan continues. We do have a Denali working group. And again, we're interested in broadening that group if, if you're interested in lending your voice. We've had a couple of good meetings of the working group, and we're excited about having a separate Denali chapter of the statewide comprehensive outdoor rec plan, which will set the stage for future use of federal outdoor rep funding. And we've got the annual work plan that's on the Assembly Report, but that's on your agenda this evening. I do want to also provide an update on the Bison/Antler project. We're calling it Antler Ridge. The location is at Antler Creek, but the hike is not going to be a creek hike. It's going to be a ridge. So, I like that name, Antler Ridge. And, and things are going, things have been going really well with that project all along. Just, we've got a great project manager with DOT on that and a lot of coordination, a lot of communication. And today, we had a meeting, and it's on track. It's on track to go out to bid soon. It's advertised, it's going to be advertised like tomorrow. The documents are finalized, and they expect to open bids mid-July and construct August, September. So, that's exciting. And I think that concludes my report to you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you. All right, could we have the report from the borough planner, please?
I don't have a report this month.
Okay. We appreciate all the work you're doing, though.
Thank you.
Most of what we're talking about is your work. Is, was there a Planning Commissioner that was able to make it to the Assembly meeting?
I think it was you.
Well, I was on the slate for it, but I was not able to go because of celebrations of learning last week. So, Mayor, what is the report from the Assembly?
Yeah, thanks. I'd be happy to provide that. I did let the Assembly know where the Planning Commission was in terms of actions and deliberations at the prior meeting and items for the agenda this meeting. And the Assembly, well, one member did voice the opinion that they were glad to hear that the Planning Commission was, was putting good thought into potential code changes regarding street names as they, the Assembly member believed that this project, you know, is for the long term and taking the time to get it right was, was a message. And, and they appreciate the work you're putting into it.
Okay.
But mainly in terms of their agenda and their agenda, that meeting and next meeting, you know, they had the amendment, FY21 amendment that did pass. That's the budget amendment that did pass for this current year. They did put $56,000 of earnings of the permanent fund investment into Parks and Rec Fund in that amendment, partly within, in anticipation of a coming project that we've worked on, talked about, supported. And that's the DOT project of the wide shoulders during the rehabilitation of the Healy Spur Road. So, in preparation for that, they made, funded that. They injected some funding into the Parks and Rec Fund. And the FY22 budget is, had its first reading. So mainly, it's, it's budget time in the Assembly level.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications and appearance requests? I don't see any. And there's no unfinished business, so we will move on to business item K1. Review of Denali Borough Code 9.12 Street Naming Methods. So, um. Let's dive in. I think the way that I'd like to handle this is to discuss possible amendments to the code, and then we'll just take one change at a time and discuss that, and then take another change. So, so if we can, does anyone have a suggestion for changes? Yes? Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have, and I like that approach. And that's the approach that I kind of outlined in thinking about this as well. And so we know that there were several topics, I would call them broad categories, that we heard a lot about and, and, and we're interested in considering changes. And one is duplicate names, right? So, that, that one seems like might be one of the easier. And I have a recommendation for that.
Okay.
And that is, in 912 Street Naming Methods, the second page of the document, which is 912040 Street Names, number two speaks to the duplicates and currently prohibits any duplicates within the borough. And I would offer a recommendation to change that. To read a new or change, "Street name shall not be a duplicate of any existing name located within the same postal zip code in the borough."
Okay, could we have a Planning Commissioner state that as a motion? Steve?
I move to adopt the change to 9.12040 Section 2 to change the wording so that no duplicates within the borough, to change it to no duplicates within the same postal zip code.
Is there a second?
Second that.
All right, any discussion?
You got a question?
Yes. Baxter?
How many zip codes do we have in the borough?
Five, I think.
What's that?
Is it clear?
It is, ma'am.
Clear.
Denali.
Denali. Can't wrong.
Well, if we had that many.
So, besides for the road corridor, are there any zip codes in the outlying areas? Different zip codes in the outlying areas?
You know, I do think some, by Anderson along the highway, might actually have a Nana's zip code.
There, I think there's a few of them. Yeah.
But I'm not sure where that line is.
It's right around the fireweed there someplace, but I, I don't know what it is either.
Would we need to, we, we would need to add the, the outlines of those zip codes onto the base map? So that we're clear on where those delineations are for, for duplicates? Is that something that you can do, Marsha, for, for, like, as a layer?
Yes, I'd have to add in the layer, and that's how I determine which streets are duplicates and basically how an address would be determined for its community.
Okay, and that, that layer of complexity is, is okay for you? I mean, does that work in your management? Okay.
It's one of the, I needed to, I need the layer anyways because I need it to determine an address for the community, to actually give a person their address. I had to tell them what community their address resides in.
Got it. Okay. And we think this is not going to cause any problem, right? Marsha?
It's, you know, it could still cause a little bit of confusion because our fire departments have different boundary lines than communities. So like, you have Cantwell and McKinley Village, they meet somewhere kind of in the middle. And so, you know, Cantwell could go into a different zip code, which would then have a duplicate. So like Healy, you know, they go all the way, you know, Tri Valley, they go down towards, I think their boundary line is the park entrance. And then for certain stuff, so EMS has a certain thing, and then Fire has their boundary. But I believe they're between McKinley Village and like Tri Valley. I believe it's the Park Road. And then, you know, Tri Valley goes all the way up to, probably the Rex Bridge or so. Yeah, so just about the Rex Bridge would be it, which, you know, that covers potentially two different zip codes.
Baxter, do you have any input?
I would say offhand, I can't think there'd be too much of a problem. I mean, and plus the fact that everybody kind of goes across lines anyway, get mutual aid. A lot of people, a lot of the different places end up responding to out of their area anyway. So there'd be a little bit of confusion either way. So I don't see how this is going to make much of a problem, though.
How does this affect the, the street name duplicates that we have currently? Does it clear them all up? Or, um. I'm guessing that we still have some duplicates that are in the same area that need to be changed. Is that true?
Yes. Probably only, I'd say maybe a handful fall within the same zip code.
How do we handle people that have, that have duplicate names? And then a new name was proposed, and then the people that live in that area proposed another new name. Do we let them go back to their original name? Or how is that going to be handled logistically?
Yeah, we would probably have the option. They could go back to the original name if it's acceptable. Or they could use a new name if they like. The name that we put out there was just a placeholder, so that one really has no difference. So, yeah, we'd go back either to the original or their new name, so that would be their option.
Okay. And, and you would contact just the people that were, that had offered in new names? Or how would that work?
Yes, I could contact the people and let them know that, you know, the name they had was acceptable, and do they want to keep it? And if they do, then we can, when we redo the maps to show the names again, it would have the original name back on there.
Any further discussion on this motion?
Yeah, sure. I think, you know, it'd probably be preferable to have as few duplicates as possible. So even if we allow duplicates, I think we could still encourage folks to really look at changing the names. Unless there was a really strong pushback, maybe we would have the right to keep it. It'd be better to have fewer things with the same name.
Any other comments? Okay, we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of this change to the code? Let's see. We don't need a roll call vote. I think we're just gonna vote. Do we need a roll call? No, we don't need a roll call vote. I'm sorry, I'm just mumbling. Okay, all those in favor of this change, raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Is there another change that someone would like to suggest? Mayor Walker?
Thank you. I have given some thought to this, and we did just tackle what was maybe the easier, easy, the only easier one, although it wasn't necessarily unanimous, but understandable. And, you know, I also want to remind the Planning Commission that these will be changes that will be recommended to the Assembly, and the Assembly would take action on it. So, the next topic, you know, that is, is a tougher one, and I'm not going to have this proposed as simple of a fix, is the suffix piece. And that's found on what would be page four of the document 912080. And I would just like to provide a little structure for the Planning Commission's consideration and maybe ask the Planning Commission to consider moving forward with one of three potential alternatives. One, meet the code. Keep it as is. Create a uniform system in this initial rollout. It can then be maintained for the duration, and it's uniform, and the suffixes mean something and have directionality to them. And at the same time, a lot need to be changed throughout the borough. And we, we did hear from the public, who, not all of who are interested in, in that change. We are a public organization. That's one avenue forward. The number two I had is the mix, the hybrid. In this initial rollout, allow exceptions grandfathered suffixes, previously, you know, existing suffixes that don't meet code. And from here forward, move forward with all new street names, all renamed or unnamed streets, or unnamed streets for that matter, would get the uniform system. And then we would end up with, right at kind of the beginning, a mixed bag. And those suffixes wouldn't always carry the same connotation, right? They wouldn't always mean the same thing. Or, and so that's the mix or the hybrid option. And then number three is remove a lot of this section of code. And the suffixes wouldn't necessarily carry directionality and wouldn't carry a lot of meaning other than preference. Except we would need to identify and define a number of suffixes. Not this big of a list, but things like loops should be loops, right? Circles should be circles, courts should be courts. And we could have a much reduced street name suffix section of code that maybe identifies, you know, five different suffixes. And the rest is, is more open for use without carrying connotation. Or definition. Kesslin, how's your sound?
It's great.
Kesslin, how do we sound? I noticed that Clay froze, his video froze a few times, so I'm wondering if his, if the audio is okay.
I was able to hear the whole thing. The only sound I've had a little bit of trouble with was when Jim was talking, it was a little quiet. But other than that, I've heard everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Would, so, I would like, would a Planning Commissioner like to take one of those and propose it as a motion? Steve?
I make a motion that we do a hybrid system, but insert the language not in 912080, but in 912040 Section B, just to make a statement in that section that during the initial startup phase, we can make exceptions to that rule, to the rules of. we can make exceptions to that rule, uh, to the rules of, uh, nine twelve oh eight oh. Until the ordinance passes or during the first naming acceptance phase, whatever, something like that.
And you need to redo B as a C.
Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll flesh out the motion as, as we go, but, um, but, um, and I'm, I'm sorry, Amber, if we're driving you crazy. Um, okay. So, Steve, can you, um, restate the motion, please?
I moved that we insert language to nine twelve oh four oh, section B. Or create a section C that would allow the exceptions to the suffix during the initial naming phase. And after the initial naming phase, all road names would follow the code.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Um, is there a discussion? Baxter?
I think it's a really good compromise. I'll take a lot of the animosity, but problems on a lot of the people, especially like here in Healy, the Healy subdivision and places. And, um, fortunately, this would just be a one-time deal. So we shouldn't have to worry about this down the road. I think it's a good compromise.
So are we saying that any road that's, can keep its current suffix?
I think that's what we're saying. That we're grandfathering in the, um, that basically we're making an exception to nine twelve oh eight oh for the purposes of, um, the initial naming.
And how much does that mess things up? Because I don't know, if you've got some roads that comply and some roads that don't, it doesn't really mean anything, does it?
Mark?
Marcia, what's the most common reason that someone doesn't want to change the suffixes?
The reasonings I heard during the public comment is one, it was a waste of time and money, which we've already spent the time to change it. So, and then others were that they didn't want to have to change their address.
But it's my understanding that they will have to change their address anyways, correct?
Yes, because nobody has a number, which is pretty much the most important part of it.
So everybody's documents, everything will have to have a new address change anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, every, right. Every single person in the borough will have to change their address on all of their documents.
If you have to change your suffix, then it's, it's not a big deal.
And there are a few suffixes that are currently out there that we do need to change. So they do kind of comply because we have a few that are actually loop roads that don't have a loop suffix. And those would probably actually be the most important or most beneficial to actually change. So you know that it is a loop road.
Any further discussion? Steve?
Well, section B of oh four oh already allows for exceptions if there's a compelling reason for doing that.
So we could, instead of changing that it this way, we could just take them on an individual basis and, uh, you know, if it's been that way for 50 years and people are pulling their hair out about it, we could make an exception if it didn't seem like it was going to mess anything up.
Steve?
A way I read it is that we could make the recommendation to the assembly that they make the, that they approve the exception. And the assembly would have the final say in it.
No, the planning commission decides.
The planning commission? Okay. And that makes it even simpler.
Your finding is to make sure that your exceptions don't, um, I guess, aren't a detriment to public safety.
Yeah. Pretty well outlined there.
So, um, so in this, uh, this addressing guide from the, the training guide for nine one one, um, it doesn't talk about suffixes, does it? Did I miss that?
It probably wasn't in that chapter, maybe. I think it made a short reference that you need suffixes. I don't think it actually told you the specifics of which ones to pick.
Yeah, it just speaks to abbreviating them.
Well, it says, don't use the same name with a different suffix. I mean, that's another reference to suffixes.
And that gets into the duplicates. I think that was part of the. Yeah, that was part of the number two in the duplicates.
So I'm not trying to be picky too much on this, but effectively we are totally renaming everything in the borough with suffixes. A street, an avenue, a lane is all a suffix. So we're going to go through and rename several hundred places on suffixes anyway. It's going to get down to it. And that is a suffix. Anything that's common that trails a name, it's a suffix. So we're telling them they can't have their suffixes, but we're going to label them and stuff. Also, talk to it. Most places think, I mean, we're, and we're not there yet, but I mean, I think the streets, that's something that's maintained, you can drive on. So we're going to name stuff way out in the middle of the wilderness as a street or a lane where people are more a little, if they see something that says road, you have a tendency to think that, well, okay, it's probably dirt. Highways, pavement, roads, dirt, problem. Most people that come out of the city or someplace around, they see something that says street, they're expecting streets, which we're not putting in here. So just cut those ways. But as far as for first part here, doing this hybrid of letting people keep their suffixes. I think just for the fact, everything takes time and money and it's going to be already a terrific amount of time has been allocated in this going one way. But I think if we don't, we're going to have an awful lot of people, every single person can come to us and demand a meeting. And what changed their name to a suffix. Way I read, the way I read and understand both of these. Is that correct? We've got to set up that they can actually come to and apply for a change of suffix and planning commission has to listen to this, each one. So I mean, what are we going to do if we have 30 or 40 different people come to us and we have 30 or 40 different hearings? Or some saying. One part. I'd rather sort of give in sort of at the beginning, try and get it fixed, then have to deal with it for a long period of time afterwards.
Well, that, that's up to you, I guess. If you want to, it'd be more or less setting, I think, a precedent of how you would want to operate. If somebody wants to change their suffix, most likely that wouldn't be a recommendation I'd allow. If you just want to come in and change your suffix, it's more or less if you want to change your whole road name.
If we allow this at the very beginning, get this out of the way, then we can just basically say, no, we're not doing this.
So would it be terrible to just do away with the directional aspect of things?
What do you mean by that?
So, so the way with the avenue. Meaning something, yeah. The street. All that, yeah. So what would you, what would you propose? What would you think?
The third option of, um,
Making the whole thing simpler?
Yeah, just the suffixes can all stay the same. Any road can be any suffix except for loops, uh, courts, et cetera, the, the things that, you know, really make sense. But that, that could be a, like, we could vote on this and if it doesn't go, try the other. I don't know.
Well, you could, I mean, okay, so the, um, so the, the motion that we're working on is to do the hybrid system. To let everything that's, um, currently in place be and add, um, a section C under nine tw- nine twelve oh four oh that says we have an exception, um, during the setup of the, um, road naming system to the, um, street name suffixes in nine twelve oh eight oh. So that's, that's the motion we're working with now. So you could make an amendment to that motion, changing oh eight oh, or we could vote on this hybrid system and then make changes to oh eight oh. Do you want to do that? Clear as mud?
Yeah, I guess I don't really follow that.
Okay, so the, the motion on the table, as I, as I see it, is basically we're just, um, adding a section B under nine twelve oh four oh. That says, I don't know what it's going to say, but in the setup of the initial road naming system, we're accepting the suffixes as they are. Except, well, no, we're not, because we're not doing it for loops and loops and courts and circles that need to be renamed. Steve?
Um, that's why I proposed the, in addition to section B, as opposed to a section C. And the one that we just approved with the zip codes and this one were spoken to on many occasions during all three stations of the, with the public. When we had seven and a half hours of, uh, of meetings, that's why I'm bringing these up. I'm not saying I necessarily have a vested interest in any of them, but those were the things that people asked for us to address. So I, I'm, that's what I'm doing is addressing them.
I guess I'd be more for having exceptions taken into account and granting them as, as needed, but to try to, you know, when people don't object to having their suffix change, just go ahead and change it. So more roads comply with the system.
Mark?
Uh, it seems to me as if we are trying to establish a road naming standard that we should just keep the suffixes in the code. And if there aren't any compelling reasons, which so far Marcia doesn't seem, I mean, the ones that she's given that are most common are having to change your address, which everybody has to do anyways, so. It seems to me as if we should just move forward with the way it is right now. If you used to live on a way and now you live on a court, I don't know if that's such a hard change to accept and move forward with, with your life.
I would agree with that. But I do see, like, in some instances, uh, what is it? Bog Hole Lane? That's a pretty sweet name and I could see people really being attached to that. Um, I mean, I like the sound of Arcturus Avenue better than Arcturus Road, but I can live with Arcturus Road.
So.
Jim?
I mean, how many new roads are we really going to see in the next 10 years? There'll be a couple of new subdivisions, I suppose, but you know, if we're only solving the problem for new roads, then it's going to be decades before the majority of the roads comply. So if we don't sort of go hardline at the beginning, we'll not really have a system that's worth much of anything.
What we currently have is probably over 120 unnamed roads, which will meet the code standards. And then, yeah, any future roads, it may be a few more years, but you know, during the process, I probably got contacted by four or five people that have built, um, on their property just lately and they needed to name the road or they wanted to.
I'm just wondering if the, if we drop the directionality of the, of the different suffixes, what that would do? What that would do to the complexity of the, the suffix changes?
Marcia, weren't you saying would almost be better to not have the directions matter at all? Than to have it all mixy uppy?
My recommendation was, I was just saying that it seems to be kind of, the purpose of suffixes is usually they were tied to a directionality. That's what suffixes have always been tied to. Now, there's no standard or uniformity of, you know, municipalities and cities. You know, municipalities and cities and counties of what they use. Everybody wanted to be different. So. You know, an avenue is described in every different place differently. And usually, you know, when you think of an avenue, you always think of like in California. When you have like the big places in LA and stuff. For here, you know, you don't think of it. And I was just saying that it'd probably be. Better. To not have it if that's a big enough concern for people, maybe to get rid of it. Otherwise, yeah, you have stuff in code that really doesn't matter, but then in general. When you use a suffix, and most people don't use the suffixes for their purpose or for the address. And, you know, each portion of an address is used by a different. Agency or entity in a different manner. So. For the most part, we've heard from a lot of peoples, in general, mo- most people don't care what the directionality of a street is. They're not going to remember, you know, that a street to north, south kind of road by our code. They just know it's a street. You know, in our fire department, or I think our, you know, our troopers had mentioned, it wasn't important to them if they had directionality. To it, but there's other places that might use it and does come in handy, especially for like loops and courts and circles. Those are pretty much uniform. Like through the nation of what they are. But the other ones, yeah, they just have a different term and they're different everywhere. Like ours is copied, I think, from Palmer. We kind of took our code from and just matched what they had. But it's, it's whatever we wanted. If we wanted to have a mixture, we could do it that way. But it would seem like we have some, some roads that meet the code and some that don't. So if somebody does think it's important to know that, you know, a street is a north-south road. It wouldn't be compliant because not all our streets would be that way. There would be an exception to the rule, which just means there's one more thing to remember. The more exceptions to rules you know, the more you have to remember, oh, well, this is an exception, or this one has an exception, or that one has an exception to it. And that's where a lot of cities and municipalities that Chris and I talked to is. You know, they've had a lot of exceptions to rules and then they get to the point where they wish they could start all over. And make everything uniform to begin with.
Jim?
I don't know if anybody else picked up the booklet and counted. I count 19 things that are being changed to court. Place or loop. That sounded about right to anybody else? Of the 95? Of the suffix changes. You know, we're talking a lot about changing all of them and then we're talking about only changing court, like loop. So that, of that ladder, looks like about, about 20.
Yeah, and the third option, you know, we have court and place. And a court was like over 1,000 feet long and a place was under 1,000 feet long, both of them in a cul-de-sac, but kind of in the third. Option was just to have basically one suffix that described a road that ends in a court. You know, it ends in a cul-de-sac, which would just be court, so we wouldn't have any places. And it just makes it more uniform like that. And I've seen that a lot more, I guess, in places.
Just a minute, Mayor. I'm, I'm trying to get, okay, so. How, how long would a, I mean, if a, if a court ends in a cul-de-sac. It's got to be a, like. That's got to be, like. What am I trying to say? There's got to be a certain length to it, right? It's got to be short enough to actually look like it ends in a cul-de-sac because, I mean, if it's. Super long and it eventually ends in a cul-de-sac, that's a little. Strange to call it a court.
Generally, when you hear of a road that ends in a cul-de-sac, whether, you know, it's. And it also depends, there's, you have some roads that, you know, you either have a road that's just straight and it ends in a cul-de-sac. Which pretty much tells you it's a dead end road. You're not going to be able to get out. Then there are some roads that, you know, they go for a long ways. There is an intersection and then it doesn't in a court. A lot of times I've seen where, and I think I actually did it in a lot of our kind of areas, is where I split that road up. So the portion at an intersection where it would end in a court, I named that. Court and then the other long road has a different name. But yeah, in general, I think it really depends on how you determine it, because generally when you hear a cul-de-sac. The intention is that the road was never to extend. You know, some roads can just stop and a lot of times you'll see them on like the state issued plattces. Like in Terry's, it just kind of stops because that was the end of the subdivision. But it's a road that can continue on if you were to develop. The road was never intended to a dead end.
So then a lot of the. A lot of the places in the subdivision would be courts, would change to courts. The.
All the places would change to courts, yeah. Yes, there was kind of a mixture and I think what we had was. Opposite of when the surveyor did this one. They kind of seemed to have the opposite. Thought, some of their shorter ones were called courts and some of their longer ones were called. You know, places.
Okay, Mayor?
I thought that those were good points and. Yeah, I did want to just support that idea. As the place and court. Component was, was something we heard a lot about in our, our many hours of, of public testimony. And I think simplifying it, I think. Something to be said for simplicity and simplifying it to. Just courts, something I could definitely get behind.
If. Okay, let me, let me throw this out. If we make the code simpler. Does that? Ease on? Okay, if, if we're not like. Trying to regulate so much stuff and if we make the, the code simpler and. In the beginning, then does that simplify the, the possibility for exceptions? To the code. If it's, if the code is simpler, then we wouldn't have as many. Needs for exceptions or. Requests for exceptions. Correct?
For the suffixes, your only exceptions would be probably what you allow initially, because. I would say once, you know, once we get starting and you're naming a new road. I don't think if we would really want to allow an exception. It's, this is, because. The suffix isn't really determined by the people on the road. It's always determined by your municipality. So. You know, once we have our thing going and you built a new road. You just tell me the name and then we tell you the suffix is kind of how it is. So. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have ever thought of take, bringing it to you if somebody really wanted to have lane. And it was a street. It'd be pretty much that it's just how it is. Your exception would be how you allow it initially.
Can I? Propose something? Just throwing something out there. Okay. What if we had? Nine twelve oh eight oh A. That says. Avenue. Drive, lane, road, street, way. Means a right-of-way. Not ending in a cul-de-sac and the first future extension in either way is possible.
Eric Hagen just joined by phone. He's driving in his car listening, but he is listening in.
Eric, concentrate on the road. Baxter doesn't want to come pick you up. Yes, Steve?
It seems to me that if we remove the. The, the directionality of the suffix, it wouldn't affect the roads or the loops. Court, circles, that kind of stuff. At all. And so if we just got rid of the directionality, it would solve it, all of this stuff, I think. I mean, that's one way to look at it.
Right, and that's, I think that's what I was suggesting by adding, by combining all of those things that are not. That are basically straight. And then keeping. B, C. And G, so circle, court and loop. And then just getting rid of place. Steve?
I mean. I don't see a reason to remove, you know. If we remove the directionality, the avenue would be in the right-of-way lying. Not ending in a cul-de-sac. And with a future extension of, in either direction. That would be an avenue. Wouldn't have a directionality.
So you just.
I just leave all those definitions there and getting rid of the. Directionality of it, of everything and. Loop. Court, circle and whatever else that is. Place, don't have directionality anyway.
So you just keep court and place? Although they're, even though they're.
I keep all of, all of the names, all the suffixes. They just wouldn't have a directional meaning, but avenue would have a meaning of. It's available, it doesn't end in a cul-de-sac and it can be extended in either direction. No, that's just getting rid of the directionality of it. You know, that's, that's a simple way of changing. The whole thing. Because I don't think directionality on these are so important to. Maybe before modern technology with the GPS and everything that we have now. It was probably more important to. Public safety people, but I don't believe that's the case anymore. I didn't hear anybody say that that was that important.
Is there any way to? Figure out how many that. How many changes that could. Simplify?
Tim thinks it's about 75. I said, thanks. So we do have a motion on the floor. We could vote on it and then if we. Then we could, if we don't want to do that motion, then we could. Propose another motion to get rid of directionality or something like that.
Okay, let's, let's vote on the, the motion that we have on the floor. And the motion was to. To change B to allow for. Actually, the, the way I named the motion was to add C, a section C. To allow for a hybrid system. Basically ignoring. The, the standards, the standards for the beginning of. Things. Is that, that's correct, right?
Actually, Steve made the motion and he indicated it was in B.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, can you, can you repeat the motion, Amber, please?
What I, what I wrote, and I hope I got that right, Steve, was Steve moved to amend section 9.12.040B. To allow flexibility and suffixes for the initial road naming process.
All right, are we ready for a vote? Hearing no objection. All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion. Does not pass. And I actually voted in the wrong way because I was confused. Okay. All right, so the motion does not pass. Is there another motion? Steve?
I, I move that we remove directionality from the suffix names in nine twelve oh eight oh.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Baxter. Any discussion?
I guess I would rather do what Kesslin suggested and combine. It's basically the same thing, but you would get rid of the. A few of the A, Bs and Cs. You would have. It would all have to be renamed, I guess, but. Combine avenue. Drive, lane, road and street. They all will have the same definition anyway, so just. Say it like Kesslin said it and have them be mean, a right-of-way lying and, sorry, a right-of-way not ending in a. Cul-de-sac and the future extension in either direction is possible.
Steve?
Susan could make it, ask for an amendment to that motion and then we'd have to vote on that first.
Okay, I amend it like that.
Good job, Susan. Okay, so the amendment. That Susan is suggesting. Is to combine. Okay, Susan, I think you're going to have to work on this.
Avenue. Pull it, no, not place. Avenue, drive, lane. Road and street. Street, maybe not way. I think way would still be what it's defined as there, probably. So those four. Just have them all in quotes, each one. And say. and say, mean, a right-of-way, not ending in a cul-de-sac, and the future extension in either direction. That doesn't make sense to me grammatically, but the future direction of which is possible in either direction or-
The future extension in the either direction is possible?
Yeah.
And that would be under 912-080-A?
A, yes.
Is there a second to this amendment? Okay, Jim, seconds? All right, discussion, please. On the amendment. Steve?
I, I don't think that all of these things would necessarily fit in the category that they could be extended in both directions. I think that most of them would be able to extend in one direction, some of them in both directions, but not all of them.
Yeah, maybe it needs to say one direction because a lot of things can't extend in both directions because they have a- Yeah.
So.
Steve?
It could say something, maybe it could say something, this, I haven't thought this out, but it could maybe say something to the effect that extendable in at least one direction.
Yeah.
I think I said in either direction.
Yeah, in either, or either direction.
That's how it's written in code right now.
Oh, in either direction is possible, not both. All right, one over the other.
Yeah, it's in either direction.
Right.
Yeah. Or both, if that's, could be done.
Yeah, it could be both.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
So, I'd just like a clarification.
Yes.
So what would, what would, would everything become an avenue, or do we keep all these other suffixes? Like roads and lanes and stuff like that?
The, so the, the amendment was to have all of those different suffixes in quotes under A, so all of those things could be possible suffixes for a basically, a basic road.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, I was getting confused.
So all of those suffixes would be fine and directionality wouldn't matter. Basically, we're just, it's just this, it's basically the same thing that you said, it's just smashing all of that code down into one statement.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, can we vote on the amendment, please? All those in favor of the amendment? Raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Amendment to the motion. The motion is amended. So now we're voting on the original motion. Is there further discussion on the original motion? Basically, we've changed the original motion so that we're changing 912-080 to have A, meaning Avenue, and Drive, Lane, Road, Street, means a right-of-way, not ending in a cul-de-sac, and the future extension in either direction is possible. So that's A, and then we've also got B, still same cor, uh, circle, and then C is Court. And then we're keeping D as Place. And-
Well, that's, D would just go away. It would go away, and G would stay.
Place? Did we decide to get rid of Place?
I don't think you made a motion to get rid of it.
Done that yet.
Uh, we haven't done anything with Place. So D is still there as Place, and then G would move up because G is Loop, that would move up to E, and then J is Way, and that would move up. Okay, so that's what it would look like. So we've simplified it. Is there any discussion on that section? Jim?
I'm sure, are there any other names, like Turnpike or Pass or something that we had to change?
There, we didn't have any of those types. I mean, there's gotta be over fifty kinds of suffixes because you have Turnpikes, boulevards, parkways, expressways. In general, I don't think we had anything quite like that because usually stuff like that, you really have in your mind, an expressway, something, a big road. We do have one road that is, or one kind of suffix that's in French. So we have Kangaroo, and Roo actually means street in French. Which, you know, is allowed in a lot of places that have Spanish words or, I think some of the French words, mainly Spanish, they do allow them to use, like, their suffixes. You don't want a double suffix, so kind of thing, but no, I don't think, I don't remember any of the other suffixes. And I looked through the postal codes, like, suffixes today have all the ones they kind of have abbreviations for because they set the abbreviations of how you want them, and I don't think, yeah, we didn't have any of those. I think, I was just trying to think if we actually had any avenues, and we do have a few that were set, but I think I went through, and I think what we have in code is kind of what we actually have. The only one that might be, and I would, was going to recommend adding, is Trail. Would be to have a ladder, but to reserve Trail as kind of a suffix for remote parcels that are actually on a trail or, like, streets or, that are actually more trail-like, that you wouldn't get a car down. More of ATV or something, and that would help emergency services and potentially, like, utility companies know if it has a trail at the end, you're going to need to do some hiking or have an ATV to get out there.
Today, but that may not always be the case.
Right, so, yeah, so if that-
Sometimes things will change.
So if a trail was, was more developed, then it would become a road or, or something else? They'd change the suffix?
Yes.
Okay. That seems like that could be helpful.
Yeah. I guess if we're discussing this, my preference would be to have the road suffix, the suffixes actually mean something directionally and not just throw it all out the window. But that's just me.
Hey, Kesslin, it's Eric. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I apologize for being late and, and not getting in. Um, just having jumped in now a little while ago, it, just hearing it for the first time, it sounds super confusing, and I guess if you could, was there something brought up in the first part of the meeting that we wanted to get away from the original Denali Borough naming method that was national standards and those standards had the directions, you know, so for instance, Lane was Southeast, Northeast, or Southwest, Northeast, so on and so forth. Was something brought up that we wanted to get away from that?
So I, I don't know that the original naming of the roads was based on directionality. Was it, Marcia? Or was just just haphazard?
No, I think what he was mentioning is, you know, in the previous meetings, the last Planning Commission meeting, and through all our public meetings, there was five things that kind of came up. One was like the, the suffixes were some of the concerns public had, and that's why we're talking about it. But we have, like, a road has to have a suffix, so we just put one in here, and now we're kind of discussing it, so there was no, I guess, picking of it or general haphazard of which ones. We were just trying to make them all kind of meet code, so we didn't have exceptions. Was the best recommendation is not to start, to start out with as few exceptions to your rules as possible.
Okay, hey, thanks, Marcia. Yeah, I was, I, I read all the material that you guys provided, thank you, and I, I was kind of thinking for the planners, from the planner standpoint, that, yeah, we need to kind of follow a standard, which is the one that you guys had presented, was the national standard. Otherwise, we're going to be all over the map, and the conversation so far is, you know, Susan kind of brought it back in, well, hey, maybe these, these suffixes that were originally proposed do have those meanings, and then we have a standard to go off of. I know some of the public's concerned about it, and they, it's more of a, I don't like changing my Marcus site port to Place now, but unfortunately, going Rogue One, it's going to make it a nightmare. I think we do have to follow some kind of convention, and the convention proposed seems to work well. That was my comment for this particular motion.
I do believe you might have missed, is when we started this conversation, is there were three options kind of on the table. One, option one was to leave code as it is and then just change the suffixes, you know, in the borough, so they meet the standards. The second option was to do kind of a hybrid option, which is, you know, there was a vote on that one, which was to grandfather-in all the ones that are currently used, and then in the future, new roads and renamed roads would have to meet the standards. And then our option three, which is now what we're talking about, is kind of the where you kind of combine some of the meanings all together, where you take the directionality out of it. And you have your options of, you know, you can have an avenue, a drive, a lane, a road or a street. And it doesn't matter, but then circles, courts, places, loops, and ways have a specific definition. And then I guess kind of in that one, there's a second option, is you have to decide, we're kind of back to whether you're going to grandfather-in some people or change the people to meet code. Which is the next step after we make a final decision on which option to go with.
All right, thanks for that explanation. Thanks.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the table. We've amended it, but we have a, a motion on the table to change, Amber, help me. What's the motion on the table?
I believe it was to combine your, the definition for Avenue, Drive, Lane, Road, and Street as BNA, and they all mean not ending in a cul-de-sac and future extension in either direction is possible.
That was the amendment. Yeah, that was the amended motion, yes. That was the amended motion.
Which superseded the original.
Yes.
Which amendment to, yeah, the one motion of removing directionality. I think the first motion was that just remove directionality, and then amendment was to actually just combine them.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah, to simplify. All right, so-
For a vote on that?
Are we ready? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All those opposed?
My hand's up for opposed.
Opposed, okay. All right, the motion does not pass. All right, so would somebody else like to make another motion?
So do we have to move to keep it like it is?
No, if we keep it like it is, we can just keep it like it is. Okay, so, um, yes, Susan?
You know, Kesslin, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we go back, we didn't catch the vote, especially with some folks online. It was a little hard to see, could we re-vote that, that amendment, please?
Oh, no.
Anybody else? Everybody else?
I guess it's getting low battery.
Say low battery, but-
The only person I see is myself. And the, you know, like, girl logo in the middle.
I think your view changed.
I didn't touch anything. I didn't touch anything.
Does anyone else have a low battery?
I have seventy-one percent.
Switch to gallery.
You guys need tech support?
Yeah.
On those little iPads there you got?
Yeah, they're, they're flopping around a little bit.
It's a ten percent, but yeah, I got backup.
I don't see gallery on them.
Yeah, you have to touch, like, the top of the screen to make a drop-down menu come in. You know, that, or just people just gotta get closer together, and then one iPad covers multiple people. You gotta be friends again.
Using better on this one. All right. So, sorry about that, to go back, but, um, we didn't quite catch the vote on that amendment.
The vote on the amendment or the vote on the motion?
Right, the amended motion.
The amended motion, okay. So, the amended motion was the one where all of the basically straight road-type things are under A, so it's, so A says Avenue, Drive, Lane, Road, Street, means a right-of-way lying, wait, a right-of-way, not ending in a cul-de-sac, and the future extension in either direction is possible. Okay, let's do, Amber, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, so this is the roll call on that amended motion. Susan Braun?
No.
James Ward?
No.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Mark Minkie?
No.
Eric Hagen?
No.
Kesslin Tensh?
Yes.
Okay, fails.
Okay. All right. Any, any other changes?
So the way it is now, we can make exceptions. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Okay, that means that we have to, as a planning commission, I, I think I understand this correctly, we have to have every person that wants an exception to come before us. And we heard seven and a half hours worth of debate on people that weren't really pleased with their suffixes changing. Well, not, I mean, not seven and a half hours on suffixes, but I don't know how long this is going to stretch out. Because there, I mean, we want to do it right and we wanted, we want to make sure that that we have an addressing system that works, but we also want an addressing system in a timely manner. So I don't know, we have to balance it at some point. I don't know, I don't know how much exceptions.
So hey, Kestlin, it's Eric. Sorry. So, you know, I attended two out of the three meetings. I missed, I missed one of them with the public comments that we had over the previous month. And it seemed like Cantwell had their specific issues, right? And a lot of it had to do with the allowance of apostrophes and the native language names and things like that. There was a little bit of concern, it seemed this way, about some people unhappy about changing court to place and whatever else. So just real quick, and again, I apologize for not being on time. But did we already address those issues, like the Cantwell issues and, and some of the duplicate names ones? As far as Cantwell can have a name the same as Healy and Healy can have a name that's the same in Anderson?
Yes, we have addressed the duplicate names in, we have a, we've changed to 912040, section two. A new or na, or changed street name shall not be a duplicate of existing names located within the same postal zip code.
Okay, copy. Hey, thanks. I think that was a big one.
So that, yeah, the duplicates have been addressed. We have not talked about apostrophes at this point. So we're just working on suffixes right now.
Well, just for my opinion then, you know, as far as where do we go from here? I, I, I think we go with what was proposed by the borough planner and that, that is our starting point, yes. We're going to have changes to our names. My place is going to change from court to place. But that, it's following the standard naming convention. And I think if we sharply veer from the standards, we're just going to have a mess in the future of, okay, hey, what do we do in this case now and, and whatever else? So I, I would propose that we stay with the naming convention that was proposed originally. Over.
Okay. Okay, so.
More work for the planet planner. Sorry, I know work, more work for us in the future if people want to come up. But there is a process for people that want to change it and they can come up to the commission then and request that change. And we can go through that process. Over.
Okay. Mark?
I was just wondering what the process is if someone doesn't like to be now living on a court instead of a place. What is the process? So there's six families, six residences on such and such court. One person doesn't want to become a place, five do. What is that process? How does this person move forward with, and what is the process to appeal a, a name change?
You need 75% of the majority on the road. So if you have six people, one person wants to change the name, they have to get other people on board, otherwise it doesn't pass.
So 75% of the people that live under. Residences or businesses?
Yep.
And these are property owners, right? Not people that live there.
Opposing the change.
And that is in this section, actually, 915050 renaming streets. And I've always thought of that to mean the street name rather than the street suffix. I don't know that it does specifically address suffixes. I've thought of it more about the name itself, right?
That seems right. Like Marcia was saying, the suffix comes from the, the governing body.
So I guess to answer your question, I'm not sure that we do have a process for just the suffix change.
All right, Steve?
I've got a motion I'd like to make that will move us forward.
Okay.
So we're not, I'd like to move that we adopt and send a, or adopt the names in the street naming list, except the duplicate street names on page five and six of 10, and those to be readdressed and for our next meeting and adopt those and so that they're ready to pass on to the assembly.
The road names don't have to go before them. You guys adopt.
I, I move that we adopt the road, all the road names except the duplicates and that we address that at our next meeting. That's, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
This is Eric. I'll second that.
All right.
There are recommendations for changes. These were as they were on the maps and I do have road names that were recommended for change in these lists.
So oh, we have, we, we could modify that motion to adopt the ones that need, don't need changing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate the initiative to move forward and expediency and, and to move forward with roads that, that are not proposed to change and to go ahead and approve those. I believe that under our agenda this evening, you know, we are reviewing section of code. And so I don't believe the motion should be to approve those street names tonight, but to ask that it be brought to you at your next meeting and be on the agenda for.
They have to be approved by resolution.
Okay. I move to cancel that motion then, or that recommendation, whatever.
You withdraw your motion?
Throw the motion.
At the same time, you know, you can, and yeah, as a body, ask what you'd like to be brought back and maybe a resolution crafted for those for your next meeting, for your agenda.
All right.
All right, are there other changes to the code that we would like to suggest? We really haven't, have we addressed the suffixes? Are we just saying we're keeping them like they are? Everyone's got to change their address anyway? And we don't really have a way for you to ask for a different suffix?
I guess if you change the street name from Marcuside Court to Marcuside Place, you've changed the street name. And so that same process would probably work, I would think. I don't know.
Maybe we could spell that out, address that. You know, there's room for interpretation in this section of code. I read it to be the name rather than the suffix. You know, you could read it that the suffix is included in the name and maybe specifying one way or the other would be helpful.
Well, the thing is, is most of these, if you leave it as is, is, you know, you, they'd come down to if you live on a place and you want to change it to a court, well, the only way you could is if your road's over 1,000 feet long. You can't come in and change your avenue to a circle because, you know, you live on a street that has a directionality. So most likely, I don't think we left any room to allow you to change your suffix unless you went from like an avenue to a road, which, you know, the definition of a road is one that changes multiple directions. Kind of like Healy Spur Road, you know, it kind of goes to the east and then south and east kind of thing. So, you know, these are pretty straightforward of, there's not a lot of leeway to change. But your question really is, is are you going to allow them initially to keep their suffix as they are and move forward with new ones? Or just make everybody change is the real question if you don't change your suffixes. So I think right now it's, you have to change it.
Right. So we're, tonight seems to be just discussion and we're not voting on any of this before it's really, unless we want to change something in the code.
That's what we're working on.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we don't want to change anything in the code, we're just moving forward.
That'd be, that'd be option number one.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Seems to have missed last Kestlin.
Okay. Because I can see in the future, if, if a avenue is extended and it becomes the definition of a road, we want to maybe be able to modify the suffix to apply to the new road form. So I make that as a motion. That, whereas the roads in the future are modified in their length, directionality and character, that to where they, they meet a new road suffix definition, that will allow the new suffix to become the suffix that applies to that road.
You're saying you would change the suffix to fit what the road actually is?
What it, what it develops into in the future.
Right, so if an avenue takes a turn, it becomes a road?
Is extended and it goes all over the place, it becomes a road.
Okay.
That new suffix becomes the suffix for that.
Sorry. Um, I have to step away for a few minutes. Graduation just finished and I need to check on that. I missed the last couple of minutes. Is it okay if I step away or should we have a recess?
Let's do a quick recess.
Yeah, let's take a recess.
Okay, 10 minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
Recess.
So I live at the end of Lake Night Road.
Yes, you do.
And then it stops.
Yes.
My road goes up a ways on my property up and turns a corner. Now, if I should dispose of that property and the guy that moves in up there, it's over 1,000 feet.
Eric's ready. I didn't note the time when we, when we took recess, so sorry.
They're higher than they are wide.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. We all, I think we're all back.
Take your videos.
Okay, so um. We don't, uh, we don't currently have a motion on the table, am I correct?
Steve made a motion.
Yeah, we do. That was the. All right.
Yeah, Steve, Steve withdrew his motion, right?
Oh, then I made another one.
Oh, sorry, I missed that one.
It was that as roads change in the future, the suffixes can be changed. This suffix, yeah, can be changed.
And is this in nine twelve oh eight oh?
If you just redo the numbering.
Numbering means, oh, right, because of blah blah.
Well, I think if you add in what his thing would be, I would, since we're using alphabets here, I think you would switch it that what's currently would be A and then all the numbers with. ABC would be numbers and then you'd have a B which would be his new one.
Gotcha.
Or I guess you could just add it to the top sentence.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
That's what I would do.
So um. So Steve, Steve was the, was the motion to add the, a sentence to that first little paragraph under nine twelve oh eight oh?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
There was three of them.
Oh, we have a second, okay. Any discussion? No discussion.
Hey, Kestlin, sorry, I was having a technical difficulty, can you say what the oh eight oh change is, please, one more time?
All right, Eric, I mean, I mean, uh, Steve, please restate your motion.
Uh, that. As the road character changes from one definition like avenue to a road as it's extended. That the new uh, suffix that applies can be. The new definite, the new road suffix that meets the definition. The road now meets the definition, it can be used.
Can be changed or will be changed or we will consider a change.
Well, when an extension to an existing road is.
Puts it into a new definition. That it can, the new, new suffix can be used. And that we already have that seventy-five percent of the people that live along the road can make that decision. It's already in there, so.
I don't know that the, the seventy-five percent thing which relates to road name changes, I don't know that it's clear that that. Is, is for suffixes.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
And it would just be for the, to deal with the suffix only.
Yeah, I don't think it would go through that process, it'd be more administrative because it meets the, the new suffix. We know people don't really enjoy changing their suffixes, road names. But um, if it were to maintain that uniformity, that would be the right thing to do, if that's the goal.
That's what the. I meant, uh, the, uh, motion should state that the new road suffix would be used.
Shall instead of a can or a may.
Shall.
So are we changing the motion? Are we amending the motion?
That's a significant change.
Yeah, so I, I, I moved to amend the motion. It needs a second.
Second.
What's the amendment?
It's a change can to shall. Instead of can be used, it shall, shall be used.
Is that already implied in what we have?
Don't think so.
Spells it out.
It, it makes it pretty straightforward.
I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
Oh. If an extension to an existing road. Changes the character of the road where it say now comes, goes from like a street to a road, like there's a directional change. That's what we're trying to accomplish here, just provide, make a provision. To change that suffix if the character of the road changes, the suffix designation.
Okay.
So.
Jim.
Could change. Sorry. So it could change to court or road are really the only things that it could turn into if there's a change.
Possibly, yeah.
Unless you went way and did a loop or gas.
Yeah, that is a possibility, so. The extension could make it a way or a loop, either one.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Do we have a roll call vote on this? This is the. Uh, that we're, we're voting on the amendment to the motion. Changing from can to shall.
Right.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Eric Hagen?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
Can you repeat that, Susan?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Lee Lightfoot, oh, whoops, sorry. James Ward?
Yes.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Kestlin Tetch?
Yes.
Hey, it's unanimous.
Any further discussion on the original motion or the amended motion?
Yeah.
Jim.
Um, so just to, Marsha, another question, they could, as an alternative, name the new section of the road with a different name. And that would avoid renaming all of the existing residents or re-suffixing, sorry.
You could, um. Pretty much, yeah, most of them you probably could rename, if it changed a direction, you could just knew the, if it's like a ninety degree turn, yes, you could just rename that as a new road name. If it, I guess if it's a circle or like a loop, they'd have to rename it. Or they'd have to keep the same name, I guess they'd have to change it to meet a loop. If they, you know, continued it, further developed it and it came back onto that same road, it would be a loop, which wouldn't give them the option. So it really depends, I guess, on the situation, some of them you could just rename their, name the new portion of it, others you'd have to keep it. And change the suffix. Or you'd have to change the suffix on it.
Any further discussion? Are we ready for a vote on this? Okay, so. Can we please state the amended, uh, motion again?
Amber? Sure, that amended motion that. That roads that change in the future and now meet a different suffix definition, the suffix for that road shall be changed. Something to that effect.
We need to clean the wording up.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Eric Hagen?
Yes.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
Kestlin Tetch?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, are there other changes? Eric, you're muted.
So I would like to, uh, make a proposal based on what Marsha had mentioned, adding trail to the list then. I think that's, i- in the spirit of the emergency responders, I think it, if we post that as the code saying, hey, you know, an unimproved road or surface or something, then it gives those first responders and. The knowledge that, hey, this is actually a, a trail and we might not be able to get our apparatus down the trail.
Okay, would you like to propose the, um. Do you know what you want to, um, that code to say?
I would just like to propose adding, um, it would be, if I have my list here right, it would be K as trail. And then, Marsha, I'll lean on you a little bit, uh, for verbiage, unimproved, you had mentioned some like unimproved. Surface or, or what was it that you had said?
Um, I had it, you know, being reserved for remote parcels that are on trails. Or. I don't know the proper way to verbalize it or. Or trails that are, I guess they're identified as trails now, they're not a platted rightaway, they're a trail. I don't know how to properly state that. It probably depends on how it is because like we have platted rightaways, they're sixty foot rightaways, but they may not be developed. But they're called, we're being identified as streets or roads and you know, they may only be trail worthy, which we have a lot of those. But, um. I don't want to change those suffixes to just be trail, I actually want them to be, the term trail to be reserved for an actual trail, so. Um, like the Rex Trail or something like that. And mainly for more like remote parcels, because I have people that are towards the end of the Rex Trail that would like an address.
I, I guess I would, I would say trails and then means unimproved. Surface. Uh, only. I was gonna say something about ATV, UTV, but I don't think we should put that in there, so. Oh, yeah, uh, trail means unimproved road or unimproved surface that is for remote access.
Unimproved, non-maintained.
All the roads are not maintained, but yeah, a lot of roads are not maintained.
How about this one, so as I jotted down, it means unimproved surface, difficult travel conditions.
That, that could be. I think that would be, uh. Okay. All right, we'll, we'll let that be your motion and we need a. All right, we'll let that be your motion and we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Steve?
You know, I think that we can come back and change the definition on trail as we see the need to change it. So I think there's no problem with using what Eric has proposed.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jim?
We do something like trail might be designated by the planning commission or staff for special circumstances and just leave it vague as, you know, we have that option, special circumstances for unusual remote right-of-way?
I, I think that's probably what they're gonna do anyway. I think this is just defining what, what it is for the purposes of of people that would use it, like EMT or something.
Any other discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote?
James Ward?
Yes.
Eric Haugen?
Yes.
Eric Haugen?
Yes.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
And Susan frozen?
She said yes.
Okay, thank you. Steve Jones?
Yes.
Kesslyn Tetch?
Yes.
Thank you, it's unanimous.
Okay, other, other changes? Jim?
I think the one we haven't mentioned yet was the traditional name and traditional punctuation, so I'd like to make a motion to amend 9.12.040 to add section C stating the planning commission may allow exceptions to the foregoing to allow traditional names and spellings of names when requested.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? Steve?
Without specifically outlining that the names and punctuation can be changed, section B allows us to do that as it is. So, you know, do we need to add it, add language to it, or do we need to add a new letter designation? Or do we change B or do we just accept that B does it, allows us to do that? So, you know.
Jim?
I think the issue I see is that the exceptions would not comply with any N A standards, because that specifically calls for very easy to pronounce and no, does that unusual punctuation or is that a postal code?
It, the N A standards does say do not do not use any punctuation such as periods, commas, hyphens, apostrophes, or dashes in road names. And that is basically was put in there because it is a kind of a postal code thing. Their system generally doesn't do it, and a lot of times it will omit it from there. But some systems won't accept it. Because they allow certain punctuation in an address format.
Did anybody figure out what Hawaii does? Because they have apostrophes.
They definitely don't have the 17-character limitation. And Northwest Arctic Borough uses punctuation that wouldn't be accepted either, so.
I contacted in, in Hawaii, I contacted one place and I haven't heard back from them, but looking at some of their data, it doesn't look like they allow, their database does not contain punctuation in their names for their street names. And I don't know if they put it on the street signs, but they don't have it in their database to have the punctuation.
So, hey, Marsha, that brings up a point we had talked about at the previous one when I think it was Mr. Carlson had brought it up about that. So could, could we operate in the gray a little bit on that and go ahead and put it in the database without the punctuation and then go ahead and have the street signs done with the punctuation? Is that possible?
That is a possibility. I mean, you could ultimately put whatever you want on a street sign. But it might, I was just thinking, it could get confusing to people because if they try to type it in, your street sign won't match what a database would have. But it is a compromise that is possible. I mean, I've seen a street sign up in Fairbanks that has like O'Reilly, you know, it has the apostrophe, but their database doesn't have it with the apostrophe.
So I guess I'd like where James was headed with this and maybe, I don't know, I'm looking for nods of approval or James, maybe what's your thoughts on it? It's your motion.
Well, then I mean, there are a lot of compromises we could make. I mostly, I wanted to just get us all on the conversation. I personally, I think we're going pretty hard line here on a lot of the suffixes and, you know, not allowing a lot of exceptions, so I'm not sure that I would necessarily vote to forward this to the assemblies as my recommendation, but you know, certainly it's a good conversation and maybe, maybe an exception would be the way to go. I thought I remembered from past comments that you know, choosing names that seem pretty easy to pronounce, like there might be somewhere that works, but that didn't really go to the spirit of using traditional names. The other part being the punctuation, that is the correct spelling of the name traditionally, so I'm not sure that a compromise necessarily is the way to go. I'm really maybe not the best person to speak on those things, but yeah, I think it would be a set of exceptions when we've sort of gone away from the exceptions so far tonight.
So I think Jim, I think Jim's first idea was, was a good idea. I mean, I'm trying to think what the names are, but when I was back in Wisconsin, there's quite a few names back up there around the Great Lakes that are not commonly, you know, tribal names that are on lands or lodges. And I think we should, I think B would allow that, but whether or not it will, has the capability of allowing that, whether it will be allowed out of there or not. So I think we should go with something on the order of what Jim proposed.
I mean, we have a Catwell member here, so should we ask him what he thinks? Can we open the floor?
Vern Carlson, Catwell, I'm representing both the Native Villages of Catwell and I'm also representing Hana Corporation as a employee of Hana, also I'm representing myself. I got a couple of things to think about on this, our state. First of all, we want our names, and they're gonna apply to the streets that only our people live on. They don't apply to streets that other people like the, the name Tana is a street that only me and my brother live on. Nobody else is gonna live on that street, probably unless we sell the buy that 28th lot. But my other thing that I'm more stuck on is the continued assimilation of the native peoples of Denali. My father was born in Denali, which was in mile 70 of the Denali Highway. The town is no longer there. Denali is now known where Steve Jones lives and and I'm like, when do we stop assimilating us and let us keep our own identities? And that's what we really want to do is like, we want our own identity. These street names allow us to maintain our own identities, and that's kind of why we proposed them, because they're only in our part of the community. They're not in the other part of the community, and that's why we came forth with these names. And all these names have some sort of identity, and the apostrophes, they allow for the speaking of it, like when you go stop, you just stop talking at the A, it's S T A, and you just stop talking at the A, you know, that's why I have apostrophe there. It's just like in the Hawaiian names, you know, they got the, was it the bar stop over the A, which means you say A, or if it doesn't have a bar stop on it, it's H, you know, and that's, and you do see that on some street signs, not all. And I do agree with Clay, they have much more than 17 figures. And we were respectful of that, where we like, okay, we're gonna wind this down to less than 17 figures and we picked all these names out. We started counting letters, like we can, we can stay within that, and we even put the apostrophes, the, actually we call it the guado stop, the high apostrophe. It's like, we use that as one of the sequences of events or sequences of the letters. And the other thing, just while I have a chance to speak, I'm not gonna change my address, because I know the US Postal Service is never going to deliver mail to my house. I know that, and I have a home in Hawaii also, the US Postal Service is never going to deliver mail there, and I even have a street address, you know, and they're like, if you don't have a box at the post office, that's where you're gonna get your mail. Last time I checked there, I don't, James, you might get mail delivered to your address there. I see some boxes up north, and I don't, they're not gonna deliver mail, so I don't have to change my address, it's gonna be P O Box 31 forever. And my UPS boxes are gonna go to Vitus forever. So anyway, that's my thought, so thank you, Steve, for the floor.
So Vern, can I ask you another question? And Tam, Tammany is on the call too. But so the motion on the floor is to grr. Forgetting the motion on the floor. Jim, can Amber, can you repeat the motion?
Yeah, it was in 9.12.040 to add a section C that allows exceptions for traditional names and traditional spelling of names.
And punctuation. And I'll, I'll just add that
Okay.
The language that, that Mr. Ward had, just a little additional language, because the B does allow for exceptions, but this C is, is separate in that it allows exceptions to the N A standards. The other ones said you can have exceptions as long as it complies with the N A standard. This exception will allow exceptions to the N A standard to allow for a traditional or historical, historical names or, that's what I had jot down. What'd you have for?
Name spelling and punctuation?
I didn't, okay, name spelling and punctuation.
I heard Sal say punctuation.
I intended to keep punctuation in there, yeah. Hope I said that first, traditional or historical names and punctuation.
So my question for Vern and Tammany, if you're, if you're able to answer. If, if the database and the, you know, for the postal code and or emergency services or whatever, if the database itself did not have the the punctuation in there and the street name did, is that a compromise that's acceptable or is that, or is that a problem?
If the database, Vern Carlson again from Catwell, if the database doesn't have it in there, who's gonna notice that?
Right.
Versus, like I say, we have it on a sign and it's there, you see it, but if it's not in a database and there's somebody typing it in a computer, pulling it up, who's gonna see that or who's gonna notice that? Is it the UPS guy? It's not gonna be the fire department, I know that, because Baxter and I have already kind of discussed it in the tour, but who's gonna notice that?
So I think what, I think the database is, is gonna be part of the, of what you'd pull up on like Google Maps and things like that, right?
The database would be visible to the borough, dispatch, the US Postal Service. In, yeah, for Google, they do whatever they want. And so they might do it by whatever's on the road sign is maybe how they do it or open source, they don't take it from me. They, and it's, and it might be, you know, the troopers would have it in their dispatch system, potentially. Anybody that would receive our database, which could be the DMV or Department of Elections. There was another one. Could see it if they adopted it. I'm not exactly sure who, all I know is I have to give it to dispatch and the postal service. And then the postal service is the database, I think, that would verify, like a lot of the mailing, online mailing places and stuff, like sometimes you can type in an address and it might not accept punctuation or something like that. That's, I think, where they verify their information from, is whatever the postal service has. Which I think would just be remembering is, and it might just be more or less remembering, if you're gonna type it in a computer, it wouldn't have a, it wouldn't have punctuation in it.
Mark?
If the names were entered into the database with a space instead of the apostrophe, would that still? I mean, if the database isn't gonna accept an apostrophe, if it just simply isn't gonna accept it, I mean, we don't have control of that. Would the space between the nets, I mean?
Yeah, I guess I'm struggling with, it's like, we're like saying this computer is archaic, it's like, how can it not accept an apostrophe? I don't understand why a database, you know, it's a keystroke. I mean, we're talking S T A apostrophe, that apostrophe is on the, is on the board, how can it not accept it?
A lot of times, like when they build computerized systems, like special symbols mean something completely different. Like, if you're in Excel, if you push like the equal sign, it brings up a different formula. It just has to do with how people enter their data into the databases, and that's the thing is, I just know a lot of databases, I've tried to order something and it won't take by .25 mile. It makes me remove it, which is a big difference for me, we're maybe even a quarter mile down a road versus 25 miles down a road. It's just, I don't know why they do it, it's just how people build their databases to run it. One example I have read from like the lower 48 is sometimes the punctuation, it doesn't, the systems that are automated, for whatever reason, they don't enter symbols into them. It won't, it causes an error into it. Periods or apostrophes cause the system to shoot out an error, and I think it's how they design the system, the computerized system. And
My, my personal vote would be, I'd rather live with the error and have my identity.
This is Tammany. I, I agree. I think that the compromise to that situation is acceptable. I don't mind. I don't mind it not being in the database at all. I mean, because I, I do understand that databases do not accept that. I've seen it happen in Excel a lot of times, just like you said. And it, it doesn't bother me that I have to enter something in differently without the apostrophe. But when I drive by Vernon's Road, I'd like to see it, just like that place down there at Casila or whatever it's called, Kinsuga or wherever that is. Mile 130 or whatever it is.
I think the signs should all have your apostrophes.
Yeah, I think the signs on the road should, should be punctuated the correct way. But the database, it doesn't bother me at all, because I'm not going to be using the database. Marcia is, you know?
And my only thing is, is usually it's not going to be a big problem. I can enter whatever I want to my database. But the problem is, is when you send it outside of our area, it's what they're going to use and what they'd accept. So like, if it shoots out an error message, it would shoot out the error where it would never accept it. So even like for, they even said in dispatch systems, because there's different types, is that it'll shoot out an error and it won't find the name. It just says error. So if it does have it in there, like in the database, that was the problem is, it either accepts it or it don't. So, and that causes the delay in response. If it tells you, sorry, that name doesn't exist, am I, no, thanks.
Susan?
So do we know, like what Mark was talking about, does a space work? Can you have a space instead of the apostrophe in the database?
Yes, you can have a space in the database, that's not a problem. A lot of the names that were recommended do have, you know, the apostrophe and then a space. I didn't see a lot of them where you had the apostrophes and it was a big continuation of a word. But I was just concerned is if you start taking out the apostrophes, it does change the word, because that does mean something of how you say the name phonetically.
Jim?
I'm wondering, Marcia, when, after the naming of the streets is done, and when we get to officially naming the individual properties, does that work in a way where we could say your property is designated, quote, you know, a name with the guado stops and the apostrophes, end quote? And for purposes of the database, will be recorded as alternative with no apostrophes? Because that would, that would say legally, this is the designation of name. And in some circumstances, this is the alternative. It creates a lot of extra work, but what do you think?
Property, properties are described by legal description. And really, the legal description of a property really has no reference to an address. They're completely different. Like, when I build it for emergency services, they only want to see the property lines. They could care less what the property line is called. Each thing has a difference. What they really want to see is the road center line and your address points, or the, and the structure point. So really, what they're looking at is your road center line, basically your road layer. And then, you know, the, we'll have like the, a point at the entrance of your driveway, and then, and then a structure point, which tells you which structure on your property might be tied to it. And that's really all they're concerned about for viewing layer wise. But then each of those layers has to have something more like, a road center line actually has like 20 different categories, because it's got to have like address ranges and your response. I guess your response, what, who responds to what? So they have to know like if McKinley Village or Catwell responds to this road or not. Yeah, so property lines don't really mean anything to them. And I can enter, like I said, I can actually enter anything I want into the database. I can put all the special characters I want, but it depends on who wants to use it.
That becomes their problem, not yours. I mean, I often use my US survey designation, because that's my physical address. I don't have any other physical address. That is a legal address. People don't like it, but that's what they get.
Yeah, and that's currently what it is, is I tell people, I'm like, we do not have physical addresses. You use your legal description. That's how you would find somebody. You know, I get calls, how do I get MTA out here? Give them a copy of your plat, you use your legal description. That's your address for physical access.
They just asked me to draw a map, which I just sent into them last week. But that's soon will not be a problem anymore.
Yeah.
If, once we get it, street names and addresses. So, but I think we ought to leave the punctuation in there, in your database. You send it out, that's, becomes their problem, not yours. If they call you, it's, it's got an apostrophe in it. That's the way it's spelled. Leave it that way. There are more and more places around the United States that are adapting to that idea. And I think that we should set the example and make people adapt to it.
In my, can I make one more comment? My closing comment is like, when we have proposed, this is just for our own streets that affect our own people. It's not for, we're like asking to go borough wide, we're not asking to go community wide. It's just for our own streets, for our own people, you know, annual, I'm like, it just keeps our identity for ourselves.
So if I can just clarify with James real quick. So you did intend to include punctuation in the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Okay.
Okay. Motion does not include the statement on NINA standards?
And it shouldn't.
It should, should. Is that what you said, Steve?
Because it should not. Oh, if you're going to put a C, because the NINA standards wouldn't allow it.
Right, so what, should it read, the PC may, the planning commission may allow exceptions to the NINA standard, to allow for traditional or historical names and punctuation?
Yes, that's what I would, I mean, that's what I, that's what I heard you say. Do we need the motion to amend the motion? Is that what you, is that where we are?
Steve, you could amend it to include just that piece about the NINA standards, if you'd like.
Like a move to amend the motion to clarify that this exception could allow names that don't comply with the NINA standard.
With certain types of names.
Certain. Culturally significant.
Culturally significant names.
Names and punctuation, spelling.
Yeah.
Pronunciation.
Amber, is that good?
Yeah, I got it, thanks.
Okay, all right, great. So we're voting on the amend, amendment. Roll call, please.
Okay, so the amendment is Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Eric Howgan?
Yes.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Kesslyn Tetch?
Yes. Okay, are we ready to vote on the amended motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Eric Howgan?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Kesslyn Tetch?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, are there other changes? Okay, with the current code, the way it's changed, how are we on? On, do we have any idea of how we are on issues and people that had difficulties with what we were doing? Who's keeping score? Mayor?
Thank you. I'd offer that I think the planning commission has done some good work on this tonight in terms of amending sections of code, being responsive to the public and the input that we've received. I'm not sure that we're done. And I know there are some other issues out there. I know we also have some other things on our agenda this evening. Would the planning commission like to have those changes put into the code and have the code come back to you for your next meeting?
Yes.
Bless you.
I guess I would just, all eight hours of the road naming meetings are on YouTube. If anyone wants to go, go keep score.
Keep score.
Hey, Kesslyn?
Yes.
Did we need to do anything about court and place?
I, I think we decided to keep it the way it is.
Okay.
One thing that confuses me, there was about a 30 minute discussion on North Wind Way at the Catwell meeting, and I don't see it on this street name list that needs changing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd agree that that's another one that was on my list of other things to discuss. And the directionality, you know, that was certainly a big issue for a lot of people in the Catwell area. And, you know, maybe we could consider how to come at that. Either tonight, if you want to dive into it, or if you think we've done good work here and ready to move on to the rest of the agenda and bring back the street naming code for next month, that could be another way to address it.
I think we're going to need another month, because I would really like to kind of see this code and go back through and actually keep score and, and look at. You know, I don't, I don't know who has time to, to do that, but, but it would be nice to be able to look at the, the new changes and look at this street naming thing and see what, see what effect that has for what, what issues we were, we were presented with. So, I don't need to have this on anymore, nobody's here. Okay. Um. Okay, so, so if, if it's all right with you, everyone, I, we could move on to the rest of the items on our agenda and bring, bring the, bring this back next one. And, and I hope the public will be patient with us so that we can be extending this one more month, but I think we're trying to do a solid job with this the first time around. Okay, so let's move on to business item K2, fiscal year 2022 annual work plan. This is your work, right? You want to say anything about it?
Sure. Thank you. The annual work plan is to kind of ride with the budget, is a planning document. It, Marcia crafted it, did a good job of summarizing where, you know, what our planning efforts and land management efforts have been this past year and what the plans are for this coming year. And it's for your review, and then it does go to the assembly, and it will be timely for their budget as well.
Does anyone have?
Yeah, question.
Yes, Baxter?
Yes. Front page, land leases. Why the big spread of $24, found $833?
Time of collection.
I can answer that, because it's as of January. Simply having some of those payments kind of been made this year.
Well, that made me the Brandon Allen canceled their lease on the hill. Okay.
What was the answer to that? I couldn't hear that.
That it's as of January 31st, so there, there weren't many leases brought in at that time. Jim?
Rose over the screen.
Oh, okay. Well, just a quick question, general question, any significant changes or points that maybe should be touched on? Or, you know, of course, there's all the detail you could ever hope for, but anything big stick out?
As to a particular area or in general, like, we haven't sold any, really any new property. We haven't planned for any new developments to be sold. We haven't actually also planned for any additional leases or anything. So nothing's really changed much from last year. Just more or less, a little more on like the addressing project where we've developed in it, and that's kind of our main project right now. Something like in the future, we will probably get into doing a more, I guess, detailed or in-depth planning effort in our management plans to break down some of our areas, to look for land to lease and sell and stuff like that, which I think is kind of in the five-year plan.
Madam Chair, Mr. Minkie has.
All right, Mark, yes.
Just question, curious where we are at with Pangini V?
Still waiting.
For?
The surveyor to turn it in. We are about to, so yeah, we're still waiting on Pangini V for the surveyor to get it turned in, for the state to review it. We are working on kind of the finalization of the Auto Lake Boundary Survey. I know they've submitted that. I did my first, my preliminary review, which is, and DNR is on there. I know they've submitted that. I did my first, my preliminary review, which is, and DNR is on their second review. Um, and then I think Anderson will be the next review process. The same company holds that one that's doing our Auto Lake Boundary Survey. Yeah, it's GPS Inc., which is, we also partnered with them for our community mapping project. Which, you know, we thought if they're already out there doing the community mapping project, they would be good to also do our boundary surveys because they already recovered most of the monuments in the area, which they're also the same company that is doing the BLM surveys down in Cantwell for the 14C3 process. So when they're down there doing that serving, that's where they'll take the lands that Ottenau had set aside for like the city of, for Cantwell and which will be put in trust at this, in the state.
Yeah, and on this, that's a good question. Thank you. And yeah, those Auto Lake and the Anderson are, you know, may come in before Pangini B. And the right things are going. And, um, the same time, we should be thinking about that next. The next survey instructions that we've put in for the Healy, all the Healy parcel or the remainder of the Healy.
Healy and the remainder of Pangini B.
Yeah.
It's in there, I think, is the next step is we have the instructions. We need to actually hire a surveyor.
So we have the instructions and, um, within the next year, we'll want to, we'll want to commit those funds because we haven't been in a rush to right now spend any money, right? But at the same time, we do have, doesn't necessarily, and we're going to talk about the budget next too. Doesn't necessarily have to be in the, um, in the FY22 budget. We do have that capital fund that can be used for survey expenses as well. So those are, those are some things that we'll want to talk about within, in the year.
Has the surveyor been paid for Pangini B?
For a portion of it?
Is there any possibility of completed or confirmed? Company that has the ability to do so?
We understood all along that it was going to be completed. But yeah, um, be a next step. And there are some other next steps we could take.
Action on the, um, work plan?
Again, for your review, any other? Sorry, go ahead.
So this is just for our review?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? About the work plan? Okay, moving on to business item K3. Land management budget. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. This is also for your review. And there's some, some line items that were, relate to the planning commission work. What we could be receptive of potential changes to, to bring to the assembly. This is what's proposed currently. Line items like projected work this year or the commission in terms of, um, training and conferences. That's line item, uh, 4021. We have 4,000 there. And, um, you know, conferences are, are, are moving back to in-person, especially by the time of APA, Alaska Planning Association Conference. Next February, I anticipate that would be in-person. Also, um, we do consider the equipment line item for needs for the commission as well as, as well as the land department. So I'd point out those couple of line items. Others, consultant fees. We do have some money in there for, um, for GIS consultation work. We probably don't have enough in there to do the Healy survey as well as consultate, other consultation work. So as I mentioned earlier, we'd probably be looking for a separate allocation ordinance to allocate money out of that. The other, um, fund under land. We have the operating fund of land and then we have the capital fund of land. And there, there are some monies in that capital fund to take on survey expenses.
I have a question.
Or, or, you see this here too, you know, it did cost a bit to do that training that we did earlier, but it was really valuable. And if you, if you want to do a fair amount more of that, you know, we should budget for it.
Yeah, that was my question. If we, um, if we wanted to, um, plan a, another, we talked about another run-through of the conditional use.
Yeah, overall, it is throughout the budget. It's a conservative constrained budget due to the, you know, the tremendous loss of revenue. And attorney fees are, are not much higher than what we expected in the standard, standard year. So to do a lot, a lot more trainings like that, you know, we'd want to think about bumping that up, but we could probably do some within what we have here.
Anyone see need for changes? I don't hear any need for changes, so I, um, so unless I hear anything, I think we can just send it to, you know, just say we're good with the way it is and let you send it on to the assembly.
Great, thank you.
Agenda, just a minute. Okay. Are there any public comments?
Public comments? Vern Carlson, Cantwell, I just want to say thank you for recognizing us and looking forward to this. We, I do, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being there. Any other comments from the public?
This is Tammy. I'd just like to say thank you too. That was good, good, hard work you guys did tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Any other comments? All right, commissioner comments. I'm just going to go around the circle as I see you. Eric?
Uh, no comments. Looking forward to pressing on with the work next meeting.
Susan?
Good meeting. Even how tedious it was. Think we had a good discussion, so look forward to the next one.
All right. Baxter?
Thanks for coming to face to face. I appreciate it.
All right, Jim?
Uh, no additional comments. Thanks all. It's been a good, good evening.
Steve?
I, I just appreciate, uh, the commission working on the things that were brought up at the three public hearings. And it seems like from the notes I took during those things that we addressed most of those issues. Not necessarily all of them, but most of them.
Mark?
It was nice to meet in person and take a step or two closer to normal. And it was good working these issues out tonight. I think we did some good work soon.
Thanks.
Thank you all commissioners and staff.
Yeah, uh, thank you to everyone for making this work. And thank you for being patient with me in trying to run graduation at the same time I'm doing this. So I, um, yeah, I appreciate all your hard work and I appreciate you guys sticking through this. I know this is a lot of tedious work, but, um, it's, it's really necessary. And I, I hope somebody can take some time. I'm gonna try to review some of the public hearings. Take some time and, and think about, um, the, the work we did tonight and, um, and try to keep score. Try to see, you know, how this, how this affects where we are with, with people's satisfaction with, uh, road names. And, um, we, you know, we can't ever make everyone happy. But, um, but it'd be great if we could, you know, do what we can to, um, to lessen the, the pain of moving forward and, and make this happen. So that everyone can, can have address, addresses. All right. Thank you for a great meeting. Is there a planning commissioner that can report to the assembly on June 9th? Susan, that was a affirmative for you?
I will try to do that. I mean, there's gardening too, so I'll give it a try.
Okay. All right. The time and place of next meeting is Wednesday, June 16th at 6:00 PM. And we are adjourned at 9:00, 9:01. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
We're leaving the assembly.